ICSC, CBSC, SSLC, NIOS, IG, IGCSE. And a lot of it is not applicable to us at all. The RTE, which is the Right to Education or the NEP 2020 is addressing the whole ecosystem. Another thing is the NEP 2020 needs to be seen for the learning purpose to be seen in conjunction with NCF, which is the National Curriculum Framework. Is the amount of homework important to you? Again, neither one is wrong, it's just a different approach.
So the number of resources that are available today, it's easier to find that information?
Yes, commonly be here. If you want to write the entrance exams, be it the GE or the NEED, CBSC is what you need to take.
Hi, welcome to another episode of Tantrums to Triumphs at Kitzada in South Bangalore. Today, we have a special guest who is an education consultant called Sandhya Viswanathan. And she has been in this space for the last twenty-eight years. She was also a founder of a preschool and she is also a co-founder of an educational platform called EdDeed, which helps bring different schools and service providers for parents to explore and figure out what is best for their child. She also manages a huge Facebook group with eighty-two thousand followers that connects parents, teachers, educationists, and there is a lot of information out there. So let's dive deep and talk to Sandhya Viswanathan today. Hi Sandhya and welcome to Kitzada for our Tantrums to Triumphs episode. Let's start with your background, your journey and so much more that you have been doing.
Hi, thanks Titi for having me here. It's wonderful and you have a lovely place as well. Journey, okay, this is a long thing because there's so many different paths that had, you know, came around and I've kind of come to the EdDeed path right now. So when you speak about my journey, I would like to touch upon the parenting part of it. I've homeschooled both my boys and at the same time was running a group or an admin of a group called Bangalore Schools, where I was just helping parents find the right school for their children. But along the way, I gathered a lot of information about the education system, which helped me to help other parents in making more informed choices. And as a natural turn, around I think two thousand eighteen, nineteen, parents started asking us about doing this offline and we came up with the Education Expo. Thought of an education expo and we organized our first one in twenty twenty. It was a real big expo that was led by parents, you know, together and we pulled it off. And we had around five expos since then, with different activities at each time. Again, a natural progression with the large group that we have built with eighty-two thousand members. The next step was EdDeed, a platform that is a search and discovery to help parents find their right schools, after-school activities and tutians camps and also jobs in the education space. So I've just been growing and nothing was planned.
Okay.
All this came together and I think this is part of my parenting that journey and trying to find things for my own children that led me to help other parents also.
Wow, that is quite a journey you have there and there is so many things that you have been doing. I'm sure that experience must be, you know, brought too much, a lot of information and helped you gain the expertise in the education field for children especially. So I would like to just take a little step back. I know you have academically, you're an engineer and you have also done psychology. How did those two happen?
Okay, so I started off after my twelfth. I was always interested in psychology, so I joined psychology for my undergrad. But at the same time, since I'd taken up science, I'd also done my entrances. And I got through my engineering as well. I was in fact the first batch, I think, where outside Karnataka students could write the entrance here.
Okay.
And obviously as a young seventeen-year-old, I was very confused on what to do. My father was the only one who said, "You do what you like. If you want to continue with your psychology, you can." However, back then in the early nineties, you can imagine how it was and I wouldn't say I was pushed to engineering, but the seventeen-year-old took in a lot more information from others to say that, "Okay, fine, who throws away an engineering seat for psychology? You can always do that later." So I went in to do my engineering. Again, electronics was what I had taken. But I realized in the first year that computer science is what I like to do, programming. So I finished my course and as I was working, I also did a course in software engineering, a two-year course, which was what I was really passionate about. However, after I moved to Bangalore, I got married and moved to Bangalore and had my kids, we had taken a decision that one of us will definitely be at home with the children and not leave them to outside support. So that was me and I had a lot of free time. By the time my son went back to school, I would volunteer, I was helping. I didn't realize it, but I was passionate about children. And again, when I got a lot more free time, I went back to do my psychology. In fact, I went back and did my bachelor's in psychology and right now I just finished with my masters.
Wow, okay, you're still studying?
Yes.
That is excellent. That is fantastic. So I know there is multiple verticals that I want to talk about. One is the EdDeed, second is you being an education consultant and how you work with parents. I also want to talk about the eighty-two thousand followers on Facebook group with Bangalore Schools Facebook group. Let's start with that because, you know, I know social media is huge nowadays and having that kind of following of parents, especially in a city like Bangalore, must have taken a lot of effort from you all. So let's, let me, let's just run through that story. How did it all happen?
Okay, so this was not planned. Bangalore Schools was started by Shweta Sharon. She was looking for a school for her daughter and she had, I think she started with a group of fifty parents. A small group, just to help each other find schools, get recommendations. And that was the initial intent of the group. But over a period of time, when more and more people, parents came on board, the questions also started about what boards to choose, how do we choose a CBSC, is CBSC better over ICSC? And because this was something that I had researched for my own children who were homeschooled, I was able to, and this was just like any other parenting group, to be honest. I was part of other moms groups as well and we were just responding. But over that period of time, Shweta came back and asked me, Manoj was already an admin. She asked me if I could also be an admin to help in the group. And now today, this group is a one-stop solution for all education-related topics. Everything from homeschooling to boards, to pedagogy, to what different kinds of school that Bangalore, Bangalore actually is one of the largest education hubs in India and has all sorts of options here.
Yep.
So as a topic of interest, I just started and it was easier for me to connect to parents and schools on the Facebook group. Slowly word spread and even today, when the requests come into the Facebook group, the reason for joining, most of them say that this was recommended by a neighbor or a friend or a relative and this is what I specifically want and I know that Bangalore Schools is the space to help me with that. So yeah, it wasn't easy. But I think at least Shweta and I, we have a natural connect with people. We find that easier and that's, I think, the main thing that helped the group grow to what it is today because we connect, we help, we talk, we interact with people and I think that is what helped parents.
Yep.
Rather than just a group which was giving info, would not have helped. And yeah, the expo as well was.
Yes, I know, I've been associated with Bangalore.
Yes, with that first expo.
Yes, we had a Kitzada play area set up in your first expo. I was talking to Shweta and you know, it was wonderful working with all of you. So I, okay, I think this is the right time for me to dive into what I think is very important and a lot of parents will like to hear also. ICSC, CBSC, SSLC, NIOS, IG, IGCSE.
IB.
IB, alternative schools, homeschooling.
Yes.
There is so many options now. What, can you explain a little bit about how should a parent choose? What do you think the parent should think about in terms of, you know, if this is, I want something for my child and and you have to wait for the child to decide what they want to do once they grow up. But when they are young, you need to decide what's good for them.
Correct.
So you're in a dilemma. So what would you recommend? How do you work with parents especially when they're choosing the syllabus? How do you work that part?
Okay, so one thing which is a tagline for us at EdDeed is, parents know what they don't want, but they don't know what they want. So this is where we come into the picture. Yes, as you said, most parents today want to give the freedom to the child to be able to choose their path. It's not all about engineering or medicine or law or whatever was the conventional career path, unless they want to do it. So parents are very clear on that.
Yeah.
But as an education consultant, they come to me to help them navigate this path. So how do I choose the school so that my child is given this? And yes, as you said, the boards are the first question, which board would be suitable to the child? Now, this is one thing that I will put here as a blanket statement. A board is not to be the criteria to choose the school. The board is just for the exams. A board is relevant only when it comes to the exams. And I'm talking about generally the Indian boards, the international boards also, probably the UK curriculum is still structured, okay? So yes, that applies there as well. However, the IB board is a very different ballgame altogether. But in general, don't choose the port, don't choose a school for the port. You need to be choosing the school for what it is. Even mainstream schools have different pedagogies or a certain way of learning which might be. So what a parent needs to look at is to find the right fitment for their family, not for the child alone.
Interesting.
Because it's very difficult for even a parent to understand what a child is or how they learn better when they're very young in a preschool level, okay? And they are evolving, all of them are evolving. The parent is evolving as an individual, the child is evolving. So it's, you cannot, by age eleven, twelve is when a child can articulate what their interests are. You can know how the child learns better and then choose the board. If you're lucky, you're in a good school, which has the same board that works for your child. But again, as a thumb rule, pre-primary parents need to see if the place is safe for the child. There's enough engagement as far as activities are concerned and the staff are well-equipped and informed or qualified to be able to understand child development. Not the academics, it's not important at that age because they need to be ready for school. Preschool is the time for school readiness. You build up for the pre-writing and pre-reading skills and all of them. Primary school, parent needs to grade one to five. A good school that works in any which ways, on the reading, writing, arithmetic. These are the academic skillsets that need to be built up. And extracurricular activities, enough options available so that, you know, they can find out what the child's interests could be because that's the purpose of extracurriculars in a school. If anything else, you take it outside. Post that is when you decide, oh, this is how my child learned better, what is our future plan? Accordingly, decide on the board.
Very interesting. I don't think any parent would have thought that, you know, I don't need to think about the board until the child comes to the middle school. Every parent starts thinking about the board to begin with, as you rightly said. And I caught on to that statement that you mentioned that the parent needs to choose what is right for the family.
Yes.
How do they do that?
Okay, so the reason why I said that also, even alternative spaces, the support needs to be extended by the family. The school does what the school has to do. Be it an alternative space, be it a mainstream school. So mainstream school probably focuses more on the academics and the extracurricular. Great, that's what they are supposed to do. But the support that a parent or a family needs to give is to ensure that the homework and other things that are needed for the child is taken care of at home. Just to support the learning at the school as well. In an alternative space, it's very different. Again, the support, the philosophy needs to extend to the home.
Yep.
You cannot have a Jai Krishnamurti philosophy just because a school is running that. Put your child there and you'll be a very competitive kind of parent. Competition there does not exist in that.
Correct.
Within yourself is fine, but not with each other in the Jai Krishnamurti philosophy. But imagine a parent at home is trying to push the child or talking about comparisons, it doesn't work.
Yeah.
Or even getting homework done, could be on that. So that's why I said the family needs to be a right fit for the family. Parents do need to, especially in a place like Bangalore, because we have these options. It's a good thing, but it's also more confusing for them because of those options. Here is where I help them to make that informed choice. The support for the school or the school environment needs to extend to the home. And for that, the parents also need to be mentally ready. So that, that is the reason why I said needs to extend. The family fitment is what is more important than that for the child alone.
So when you work with families and parents, can you give us a little idea about how your process is?
Yeah, sure. So first I do ask them why, because I have parents who come to me for the school search or for homeschooling also. So these are two different set of parents, right? So first I ask them why they make this choice, whatever it is. If they come to me asking about a board relevant, my first question to them is, "What are you looking for? What is your thought about education?" This is also one of my first questions. From there, I take the conversation ahead. Most of my clients are parents moving from abroad. They want to know how the right school that fits their child, okay? If it is fifth, sixth, I understand where the dilemma is. But even younger children's parents are looking for this because they are conditioned all these years and they have seen that CBSC is this way, ICSC is this way and they don't want that because their child, even though child has probably not started school, they don't want that for their child. Like I said, they know what they don't want, but they don't know what they want. So the thing here is to help them know first that schools in Bangalore, you do have a lot of options. Including CBSC and ICSC schools, which have a certain pedagogy. Because neither one of the boards are mandating that there is a certain way to teach. They are about the child. They actually say that you have to follow the child, but unfortunately, none of the schools do it. But there are schools in Bangalore, you will find even CBSC schools that are following a different pedagogy, leaving the child to do that. But CBSC has a structured, much more structured approach. So these are the information that I give the parents. Structured approach as in what content to be done in grade one, two, three years. And the school also has to return this information to the board. While this is something, I'm sure you wouldn't have known, the CISC board, which is what is commonly known as the ICSC, ICSC is the name of the exam, not the board.
The board is called the CISC.
CISC board, the council of, okay? So what you wouldn't have known is that it does not have a syllabus except for the tenth grade exam.
Okay.
So what you see, all this preparation for ICSC from grade one and above is totally unnecessary.
Sorry, just to pause there. So the syllabus that ICSC schools are following is something that the school has curated?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not something that comes from the board?
No, the tenth grade exam, yes, the ICSC exam, they have a syllabus for that.
Okay.
And just a few years back, they have a framework for the lower classes, just a framework. Nobody knew that because we always thought ICSC has so much content and they started working on their reading and writing from grade one. So next, this is the information that I give parents, that this is how it is. There are certain schools, in fact, alternative spaces that needed to be affiliated, wanted to be affiliated for an exam, chose ICSC or the CISC board over CBSC for this reason. They had the freedom to do their philosophy all through and get them ready for high school exams.
Okay.
Okay, and CBSC has been changing every couple of years.
So is there an overlap between the CISC and alternative schools? Because even the alternative schools curate their own.
So alternative schools are called alternative because of their methods that they are using. These are two different things.
Okay.
Boards are related to the exam. Philosophy is a different thing. You can do your CBSC syllabus or your CISC or ICSC syllabus using any philosophy. It can be a Jai Krishnamurti, it could be a Montessori. Philosophy is different from this. They can work hand-in-hand. A Waldorf school could be affiliated to a CBSC or an ICSC. Exam is different.
Okay, got it.
Philosophy is different.
That's very interesting. So there is a philosophy and there is a board. So you need to look at both the options and figure out what is the best option for your child.
Yes.
Very interesting. So let me throw another spanner in the works, NEP.
Okay, NEP, another favorite topic of mine, yes.
National Education Policy, everybody's talking about it. Everyone's waiting for it. I think the rollout has started.
It is NEP twenty twenty.
Yes. So how is it all going to sit together?
This is again a very interesting topic and again, one of my favorites. Another thing that you didn't know is NEP twenty twenty is not the first NEP at all, okay? Now, thanks to social media and things like this, you know, just blowing up in your face, you hear a lot about NEP twenty twenty. In fact, NEP nineteen eighty-six was rolled out in a particular state all throughout. The whole NEP nineteen eighty-six was rolled out in the early nineties in a particular state. It flopped. It was very similar to what the NEP twenty twenty is. One, it could be ahead of its times and two, I felt that there wasn't enough orientation and understanding and training to implement it properly. Even as a young twenty-year-old, I felt it was awesome. But unfortunately, it didn't work out. Now, NEP twenty twenty talks or the theme is equity. So no child should be left behind due to whatever socioeconomic reason or intellectually challenged or disability, nothing. All of them should be given a proper education and also the ability to choose their path. This is down documented. However, you must be reading up on all these things that come up regarding the language and all of that. A lot of it is misinterpreted.
Okay.
This is a large country, a diverse country. We are living in a city, our children are exposed to a lot more. And a lot of it is not applicable to us at all. The problems that we see are not applicable to our children because we are already in the city. The larger population are children in the villages, underprivileged. So all of this, be it the RTE, which is the Right to Education or the NEP twenty twenty is addressing the whole ecosystem and not just our group. We cannot think beyond ourselves, so we, we tend to get worried about a lot of things that come up. Now, in the NEP twenty twenty, it clearly gives a, an idea or it's a policy. Then there are no rules. A lot of the policy points in the NEP twenty twenty, a lot of it, not all of it, can be implemented by a school without having a rule coming and breaking your head over it. It's easily doable. Things like, let's say in the preschool, they need to learn through play. These are the concepts that they need to learn or their numeracy skills. See, it's very generally put out there.
Yep.
These are small things and there are multiple points. So these can be implemented at a school without any, you know, comms there, no issues. Maybe where it would be a little challenging is to have the pathway in high school exams because these are still bound by what we already have here. Another thing is the NEP twenty twenty needs to be seen for the learning purpose to be seen in conjunction with NCF, which is the National Curriculum Framework.
Okay.
That also came out, I think, twenty twenty or twenty-one, I think. That has also come out. So these boards are supposed to keep those in mind when they are creating their content, right? So as a parent, just because we are hearing it, we don't need to be so overworked over it. It is something that has to be implemented. If it does, I'd be the happiest person, but I do think that would be very challenging with the diversity and having the experts. Planning something out as a policy and implementing it is a, it's very, yeah. It's very, yeah, it's different and it needs to be done differently in different places.
Yes.
Tied to three cities versus villages versus metros. It's the same thing. It's out there for you and it can. The underlying need is to bring all of, all this generation, all the children to the same level. But one that will take time and it has to be worked differently. You can't do the same thing here as you do in the villages. Like, for example, our children are used to computers, so digital literacy for them is going to be very easy.
Correct.
While, let's say in the village, even a desktop has to be kept there and they need to know the parts. Our children are working on mobiles, like a one-year-old, two-year-old knows how to navigate to YouTube.
Yep.
And they wouldn't even have seen it, right? Now with phones, yes, they do know that, but they're not using it in the right way because they've not been informed. So digital literacy there in the villages would be very different or the curriculum needs to be very different versus our children. And then they build up to a certain level where by tenth grade, they are able to, or by eighth grade, they are ready to prepare for the exam. So this is just one part of it. There are so many other points in the NEP twenty twenty, it's a policy. Another interesting fact also is that the committee for NEP twenty twenty, a lot of them were from Karnataka.
Oh, interesting.
Yes, so I believe that they had been working on similar points in the government schools already before coming up with a policy and announcing it and, you know, getting it out. So it's, it's worked.
Yep.
But yes.
It's at a very nascent stage at the moment.
And that's how it works. It is, you know, has to be done in phases, has to be trained.
Yeah.
All the stakeholders need to be oriented towards that. So there are a lot of things and the NEP is a central thing, then each state makes its own policy on what rules they can do. So a lot of things, a lot of things are happening in the industry. So trying to streamline a lot more, there's the APAR that is coming like the ADAR.
Yep.
So an identification, it's not just an identification of a learner, it's also going to be mapping their path so that it's easy to, you know, pull out information where it is required, especially for children who are moving, families that are moving across. So all that, it's just started, just like the ADAR, like resistance somewhere, but I'm sure everything will fall. When schools have to be on the UDAIS platform, all the details are there.
Yep.
So it's a huge.
Yeah, so there is quite a few changes. NEP framework has been introduced, schools are trying to adapt to it. There is APAR, there is UDAIS, there is, they're digitalizing things. They're trying to keep records of all the students. There's lots of changes and it is very overwhelming for a parent.
Yes, too much information for them to make an informed choice.
Correct. And it is not like how it was before. We would talk to other parents and ask, "How was your experience?"
Yes.
There is a lot of new changes coming up. At the same time, the experience of the other parents have may not be relevant.
So that's another point in my consultation or in the group that I see. So when you are asking another person for a review of a school, especially parents who are moving from other places, right? You need to see if they are also aligned in a similar way as you. Parents tend to. Parents tend to say, I'm happy with the school.
Yep.
What they are happy with might be a point which could be your, you know, the thorn in your.
Yes.
You know, some parents want discipline, fair enough, that's why I said. If that family needs discipline as we know it, they will need a school that.
Absolutely.
Has the same thought process on discipline. But you cannot go and put your child in such a school and want freedom.
Yeah.
Or say that, you know, they can walk out of a classroom anytime that they want. An alternative space might be better for that. So what I tell parents when you are asking for reviews from other parents, always be specific. Don't just ask them if a school is good or bad.
Yep.
Ask them specific questions about what is important to you. Is the amount of homework important to you? Ask them that. Is playground and the use of playground, there are schools that have a playground but it's not used. Check that with the parent.
Okay.
So as specific communication, is the school open to communication from parents? Some schools are, some schools aren't. I'm not saying either one is wrong. There are parents who are happy that way, where there's no communication in the sense, only what is relevant. You take care of your work, I take care of mine. And they're okay with it. But there are other parents who want to be connected to the teachers or to the head of the school to understand, how can I help my child?
Yep.
Again, neither one is wrong. It's just a different approach. So ask specific questions when you are asking for a school review.
Yeah.
For technical information to make that choice of which school or which board. Yes, you need to come to somebody like me who would be able to give you that information. But when you're asking about how that school runs, because you need both.
Correct.
You need this as well as that when you're asking for, is the school doing exactly what they are claimed to be doing? Then you be very specific as a parent to ask the other parent. And in that conversation, you can actually make out whether that parent aligns to the same thought process as you. And if they think that the school is good, then you can probably consider it in your list of schools when you're checking.
That is a lot of information and I think the key point here is the parents need to internalize and figure out what they want more than.
Yes. So like I said today, a lot of parents in the metros are aware. And they do come to me asking exactly this, okay? I need help in figuring or navigating this path. Again, the tagline comes here, they know what they don't want. They say, I'm clear, I don't want this, 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 this. I don't want a school, you know, similar to what I went to.
Yeah.
And then I have to ask them, I ask them this, what is the reason?
Yeah.
Because some children actually work well under structure, like the typical schools that we had. But a parent who didn't work in that system will definitely think that I don't want this for my child. So I know parents who've changed multiple alternative spaces or schools four to five times for their child. Just to end up to know that that structured one was what fit their child.
Yes, I have come across.
Yeah, so but today, the much younger parents, the fresh parents, whose children are just entering the school system. They are much more aware that there is, I need help here, I know what I don't want.
Okay.
But how do I look for what I want or how do I even figure out what I want?
Yeah.
That is where I help them.
I think a reason for that is also the number of resources that are available today.
True.
Um it's easier to find that information.
Yes.
And parents know how to get that information.
Including, they might not know how to get that information.
Okay.
It's easily available compared to when we were younger and in school. The boards, all their information is available now. The parents just didn't know how to get that.
Okay.
When I tell them that or whenever I give them info, I always give official sites also.
Okay.
Because this, this is another confusing factor because today I see a lot of reels. I myself, my clients send them to me saying that these people are doing it, why don't you do it? But I see a lot of misinformation. Some are general information that, or people who claim they are experts. Giving general information which is not correct, any which ways, like for example, very commonly be here. If you want to write the entrance exams, be it the GE or the NEED, CBSE is what you need to take.
Yep.
All the boards, including the A levels, which is the UK board, IGCSE is the tenth standard exam, A levels. They all cover the content that is required for the entrance exams. And not, it is not aligned to the NCERT.
Okay.
It's a different ball game altogether. An entrance prep, you need speed, you need all the content at your fingertips. And you need to know how to eliminate quickly enough so that you don't lose time. This is the practice that all these other entrance coaching classes are doing. It doesn't matter what board you are coming from, as long as the board is covering the content and all the boards cover the content.
See, the question is, the board is covering the content, is the school covering the content?
School has to cover the content because the twelfth standard exam has to be taken. They will cover it.
They will cover it.
Yes. Entrance prep is a totally different ball game. So the myth that CBSE is aligned to the entrance exam is not correct.
Wow.
You can be an ICSE, ISCE student. And still be able to, because the prep required for that has to be done by all of the state board.
Yeah.
I am from an ICSE, ISCE background. Most of my classmates are either PhDs in IIT from IIT. Doctors, engineers, all top level. I'm not even talking about regular. And this I'm talking from back then. So it's not the content.
Yeah.
And these myths, parents are not aware. Because if you see five reels saying the same thing, you naturally think. That is one. Media, newspapers. Newspaper articles are written by these journalists. Who get part information and it is their perception and understanding. Partly, the NEP twenty twenties myths are also because of that, the misunderstanding of how they put it across. And we've all grown up thinking what you see in the newspaper is the right information.
Yep.
Right? So that's where parents get stuck. How do you, what do you call it? Separate the, the shaft from the meat? So this part is, today's most biggest problem would be that. Information is available, they don't know where to look. This is also why I give the official. Official information, either the link or the page and tell them where to look. So that is official right there. Even if there's a problem, they know where to go and ask. They don't need to keep coming back to me. So for younger parents, I actually help them on how they need to go about this journey.
Okay.
They don't need to come back. Where can you find this information? Where can you make your own decisions? It's all available today, unlike earlier. That's true.
Very, very interesting and I think a lot of parents would love to talk to you. And there are so many myths, like you said, that we tend to believe based on the reels that come out. Or what people are talking and it is very difficult to validate that information. Given the number of sources that are available, you don't know what is right.
Absolutely.
And then you get lost.
Sure.
I want to talk to you more about homeschooling and NIOS, but we'll probably do another session for that. Um because I know we need more time to dive deep into that as well.
Yeah, vast topics.
Yeah. So let's maybe conclude with one last question that I would like to know from your perspective. Because you have studied it so much, if there is one thing that you would change in the education system today, what would it be?
That's a very difficult question. Um I would think the assessment pattern needs to change. And then everything else working towards it, the NEP is already in place. But for that to work, the assessment pattern needs to change. And the mind shift for the adults, the present adults, be parents, be teachers.
Okay.
Only then can you train them.
What kind of a mind shift are we talking about?
Even today, teachers are coming with content-based teaching.
Okay.
The skill-based teaching has not happened properly in many places, also because the assessment pattern is this way. So to move into that, teachers talk about it, we want to do it, but they are not equipped.
Okay.
So IB, for that matter, IB I would talk as a very different board. But IB actually would prefer to hire people from other fields and train them. It's easier to train them because IB totally works on skill sets, not on content. So if we can have that system, this needs to change. For that, the thought, I think the need, that thought has changed. People do say that we need this today, but that need to translate to implementation. The trained teachers, that training, their shift, mind shift has not happened yet.
Okay.
And it takes a lot of work.
Take time, yeah. Yeah. Very interesting. I really wish I had met Sandhya Viswan. Uh when I moved from abroad to India and I was scouting for schools for my children, they are in their teens now, so it's too late. But this is definitely a very, very valuable, you know, insights to how the whole syllabus works. And I think we have just, we are at the tip of the iceberg. There is a lot more. And I'm going to try and see if I can get some more time from you. Because I really want to understand how it all works and it's very helpful for the parents.
Or Edede is the platform because I plan to put everything out there. Even considering the scale of people who come to me, there's only so much I can handle.
Yeah.
So I, I want to help more. Yes, so Edede might be the place.
Absolutely. So Edede is the platform to know more. Sandhya Viswan is the person to go to. All the links to get in touch with them will be part of our content on YouTube and Spotify, on Insta and Facebook. So to follow us, but we will get more information from you because I really want to know a lot more about homeschooling. Your journey of homeschooling, NIOS, and alternative schools as well. Um like I said, it's just the tip of the iceberg.
Yes.
Thank you so much for coming and it was wonderful chatting with you. I didn't realize the time at all.
Likewise, likewise.
And looking forward to more conversations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sandhya.
Thank you.